I mean to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance and find a flag to look at. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, a means called to order. Pledge allegiance. We're not going over protocol. Did you have anything else, though, that you need to say, Tom?
No, so just a couple items. The city administrator has determined it's not practically prudent to conduct an in-person city council meeting due to the local state emergency and social distancing guidelines. Accordingly, a city council will participate in this meeting being an electronic meeting, and the city council will be conducted under Minnesota State Statute 13D point zero two one. To the extent practical members of public may attend the meeting utilizing the link that was publicly posted. Related to the agenda, the council had discussed amending the agenda to add a discussion related to the 2022-2023 projected budget under administrative reports. With that change, the council will be asked to adopt the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Second by Kate. Second by Amanda. Don, you're voting first.
Aye.
Vote aye as well. Amanda?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. Oh, okay, give that up. Presentations, proclamations, and acknowledgements? We have none. So, public comment? Is there anybody on that would care to speak into public comment?
Mr. Mayor, this is Tom Wolf, county commissioner.
Commissioner Wolf, how are you today?
I'm doing really well. How about you? First of all, just a couple, couple things here tonight. First of all, congratulations to everybody, and thank you for re-electing me.
You as well.
Yep, thank you. So, the helipad I've been talking about out in Cedar Lake Township that went through, and so it's got to go through a couple of additional hoops with the FAA to get final approval. We're still looking at a two and a half percent levy or less. It depends on how much the state cuts us. There was a, an arrest made today in New Prague, two people, I believe it's a mom and a son, for a murder that was committed in 2014 in El Cuna Market. And then ninety-one and twenty-one, just to the north of you guys, there's going to be a stoplight there, and I think a few of your residents may take that. And that should be done by the week after Thanksgiving. So, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Tom. And congrats again. Gene, have you, Gene, I'm told you had, you may have something for public comment.
Yeah, I want to congratulate Joe, Amanda, and Bryce on their election. And then I want to share something with you guys. Last week when it snowed, I was returning from Northfield, and I come to town, and here's a gentleman cleaning snow and blowing the snow in the road. I think that's part of that culture where people think they can do whatever they want. Actually, they think they're entitled to do whatever they want. I also want to say there's people in town, they'll take their snow from their driveway and push it in the road and leave it there. There's also people who'll take snow and push it across the road. Most other towns don't allow that. I didn't find an ordinance on that. I thought it was a state law, but I didn't find that either. So, I'd like you guys to consider if it isn't a law or an ordinance, maybe make it an ordinance. Because I don't think that's very nice to do.
No, I thought it was an ordinance.
Well, maybe it is. I didn't find it.
Yeah, it's also state law. You're not allowed to push snow back into the right-of-way. And we have at different times contacted property owners, advised them of it, made them clean it up, et cetera. To a large, yep, to a large degree, it involves the officer when they're coming by to, it either has to be really obvious or watching them do it. Most often, we become aware of it when their neighbors call us, and then we can have, either an officer or Public Works can go down there and have a conversation with the homeowner. A lot of times, to be honest, we find people, they just don't know that you can't do it. They know that maybe you shouldn't, but they don't know that actually legally you can't. And after they're advised, the issue tends to go away at that property going forward.
I don't believe they're even supposed to be pushing it across the road. They're supposed to keep their plow off the road completely.
Tom, how often do we put, put information out or do little, I mean newsletters, an annual thing?
Well, snow came a little earlier than usual, but we usually in our late fall, early winter newsletter, which usually goes out in early December, we have a newsletter, and in there we have talk about, you know, you're responsible for cleaning your sidewalk. It talks about mailboxes and clearing of mailboxes, and it does talk about putting snow in the right-of-way. It kind of has parking, parking during snow, emergency events, all of that. And that's usually a large article that has all of those elements in it. And we also have Facebook posts on those same topics that go out over the course of the season that we do annually.
Hate to be calling all the time, but I'll do my best.
No, if something, if it is happening, just, actually, just, I'll defer this to the chief. Brady, would it be best for Gene to call City Hall or just call 911?
I was just going to weigh in on it. So, in twenty, the winter 2019 to 2020, we had one complaint. And Gene, normally who they come in from is the Public Works drivers, the snow blow, the snow plow drivers. They will call us when they see it. They make note of the address, and we'll go and talk to them about it. So, we had one in 2019 and 2020, and we had one this year. So far, Public Works advised us that, as right before, when they're coming down on one side, they saw them plowing into the street and not plowing, snow blowing into the street when they came back the other side. So, we spoke to that homeowner. That's typically how it goes. We're not going to cite for it, because you're right, typically, people don't know. They're blowing it just so it doesn't bury their driveway. When it comes through, they'll do that as well. So, it is not a huge problem, though. If you talk to Public Works, I don't believe Cory's on, but it happens, but we don't see a ton of it. It's not very, it's not rampant, let's put it that way.
Well, there must be some people at the Public Works that are not, not actually informing you, because I know a few people have been doing it for the last ten years, every snowfall. Anyway, it is what it is, and we'll do our best to inform you.
Thanks, Gene.
Appreciate it. I appreciate you, Gene.
I felt I had to share that, because I don't think it's right.
And getting back, I didn't answer your question, but yes, you can call dispatch, non-emergency, 911, either one, when you see it, and we'll get out there if we can.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Right.
Another thing, there's people that actually watch these meetings, and they might get the hint that way, too.
I don't know how ratings are these days, but.
Sometimes it surprises me how many people actually watch these meetings.
Oh, good. I hope people do.
Mr. Mayor, I don't.
Are you going to say something?
Well, I was just going to say, I don't have anybody else with their hand raised, and I don't see anybody making any visual cues that they have something for public comment.
Okay, I see Bryce is on. I don't know if he's still speaking for the chamber or just a guest.
Yeah, I can.
Did you?
I can go now. I was just looking at the agenda, and so I was under reports, so that's why I didn't speak up. If you want me to go now, I can go now, or I can wait.
Yeah. No, that's fine. Usually, we try and get through the chamber, update right away into public comment, by the way you don't have to stick around for the whole meeting if you don't want to.
Sure. So, for the chamber, there's not a whole lot to share. Unfortunately, as many of you probably already know, we had to cancel our annual dinner that we were planning to do outdoors. We did that before, obviously, the announcements came, came out this week about the further restrictions, but really as a, as a caution from the chamber itself, just seeing this increase in numbers and things like that. So, you know, we, we decided that it was best that we hold that off and not hold the large gathering just because of the numbers. And we're also just having some discussions right now about the tree lighting event, which we had talked about doing more as a drive-through event. We're still discussing whether or not that is the best option moving forward. We believe we'll still do some type of drive-through event, but there'll be further communication from the chamber as far as that's concerned. And then lastly, I think, given this week's restrictions that the governor put in place, I think that the chamber will probably put our heads together again and see how we can best help our businesses in the community as, you know, some are greatly affected by the next four weeks and possibly even greater. So, we'll be definitely working as a board to see how we can best help the businesses in our community moving forward. That's it.
Thanks, Bryce. Is there anyone else on for public comment? One, it's gone twice. All right, public comment is closed. So, on to consent. Does anybody have any items on the consent agenda that they have questions on or they want removed? Not, I do have one item I wanted to bring up. So, assuming it's just me, just regarding the item D, the extension of the variants, excuse me, the extension of the, of the Dakota Acres Second Edition. I am just curious, and I know there was a letter at the packet, but it didn't, it seemed kind of general. I'm curious, what were the, what were the good faith efforts that have been made so far, if they were required to do so?
Renee and Haley.
If it's a longer answer, I can pull it and the agenda.
I'm going to defer to Haley since she's been dealing directly with this developer.
Hi, good evening, everyone. To be completely honest, I don't know the ins and outs of everything happening behind the scenes, so that would definitely be more of a question for the developer himself. However, I do know that Mr. Gensmore is in pretty regular communication with the city. I know that they are still considering plans and talking about the building itself and what that might look like. So, I know it's still on the table. It's not something they've totally forgotten and pushed aside, but with COVID and other delays, it's just not happening as soon as they would have liked.
Haley, in your report, you indicated that developers indicated that they have obtained financing for the project?
Uh huh. That is correct.
Okay, so, so we don't know any really, to what extent efforts have been made, what really the front, I mean, COVID is obviously an issue, but it doesn't need to be slowing down lots of other projects. So, it just, it struck me as odd, and I hadn't heard much of an update in quite a while on it, so I was curious with that one. It's not going to make a big issue out of it, though.
I would echo Haley's comments that he does, that Mr. Gensmore is in communication at, I would say almost weekly. This is a regular topic of conversation, different, you know, really evaluating as they continue to drill down the perform on the apartment, you know, is it better to do one building, one larger building at one time versus the two that they originally were thinking, testing the water with, you know, a single building. And then the construction costs keep changing with the increasing prices of materials. So, I think there's a lot of moving targets.
All right, one more question, and I'll either drop it or pull it and contact. Is there, you know, actually, you know what, I'll save it. I'll, I'll drop it. So, I'm okay with the item on consent. Anybody has a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda, Amanda.
Second, Kate.
By Amanda. Second by Kate. Don, you want to vote first?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Kate?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
All right, consent agenda passes. We have no public hearings, so on to general business.
Mr. Mayor, we have one item under general business this evening. Council recall that this item had come up during our capital improvement plan discussions at our last meeting. We are actually asking the council to authorize staff to negotiate property acquisition of Lot 14, Block Two in Woodcrest. The council recall that this was part of Windrose Street connection right-of-way project. Just a little bit of background, the Woodcrest development contains forty-three homes or lots up on, on top of the Pete's Hill area. It's located just north of the Windrose Seventh and Eighth Editions. There's currently only one access into the property right now. That's a relatively steep roadway into it. It would not, in today's standards, would not meet those standards because of its level of steepness. There are historically issues in accessing the development during certain weather conditions, primarily snow and ice events. And this has been viewed as a public safety issue, one for Public Works to be able to access and safely access the development, and also if emergency responder, if you can't get a plow truck up there, are you going to be able to get a pump, ambulance, a pumper, pumper ladder up into the development if there's a fire or other Public Works emergency? There's only one remaining potential option for getting an additional access into the neighborhood, and that would be through the Windrose neighborhood. You will note that there is a lot identified on the screen in the lower right-hand corner. Staff has researched the viability of being able to provide some form of an access, whether it's an emergency access or regular road right-of-way through there. We've done some wetland delineation work and some preliminary survey work to, to do that initial research. We've also contacted the property owner to determine their interest in selling, and the property was just recently listed on the MLS in October of 2020. The city would need approximately eight thousand square feet of right-of-way of the property to be able to extend any sort of an access that would be able to carry vehicles of the nature that we're talking into the property, whether it be as a regular narrow street or as some sort of an emergency access into the development. We do believe that the residual lot would be buildable. So, what staff would be proposing would be acquisition of the property and then selling the remainder of the lot at some future date as a buildable lot. We are asking the council to authorize staff to negotiate a purchase agreement for the property, subject to final approval by the city council. We have taken this approach several times in the past with regards to acquisition of specific properties. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Renee to elaborate a little bit more about what she knows about the current list price of the property, past contact with the real estate agent or the property owner, and the whole concept of acquiring the property and then selling the remaining property as a buildable lot.
Thank you, Tom. Mayor and city council, I was the one that had originally made the contact with the property owner, had talked to the property owner and his representative on a couple of occasions. There was indication that they were open to either selling the whole lot or a portion of it. I was a bit surprised when I, we realized that the lot had been listed on the MLS without, you know, without a call to the city. Our correspondence with them had been this past summer. But it's also understandable that that is part of their negotiating position, because if they can get multiple parties interested in the lot, it's to their benefit. So, I did very quickly, immediately, I think it was the day after, well, the day the sign went up, Cory let me know that the sign went up, and we contacted the listing agent the next day, and they basically kind of is in the market, it went on the market for eighty-nine-nine, which is under, the property does have municipal sewer available to the lot currently through the efforts that, you know, Rich has been undertaking to provide municipal sewer. There are definitely, you know, some negotiations involved.
Anyone else's audio just cut out?
Mr. Mayor, Renee's computer just had a technical issue, so I'm going to have her step in on my computer to continue the discussion.
All right, sorry about that. There has recently been a price adjustment on the lot. So, based on my discussions with the agent, we've definitely come to some, I think we are definitely on the same page as far as where our negotiations could lead, and feel good about the possibility that the city could acquire it and, you know, resell the lot in the future and retain it right away.
Renee, what kind of price point, after we take the eight thousand square feet or whatever, what kind of price point are you thinking you'd be able to put it back on the market for? Do you have any idea or have not even researched that yet?
We have researched it, Kate. It is not our practice to discuss any of the price points or any of the details within the public meeting. If you would like to have that discussion, we'd be happy to do it offline.
Perfect.
Rex is true. We prefer not to do it in public meeting.
That's okay.
Any other questions? Anyone opposed to this? Anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to.
Or is there a motion to be made, or is, sorry, do you need, is a motion needed, or is it directed?
It would be a motion. So, it would be a motion to provide direction. So, we'd be looking for a motion to authorize staff to negotiate a purchase agreement on Lot 14, Block Two of Woodcrest, subject to final approval by the city council.
So moved.
Motion by Kate?
Second, Amanda.
Second, second by Amanda. Don, would you like to vote first?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well. Amanda? Kate?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. So, we're on to reports.
Under administration, Mr. Mayor. I have three items plus the additional item that we'd added at the beginning of the meeting, which was continued discussion on the projected budget. As we have as a standing item on our agenda, the discussion regarding council meeting format, status quo, which is remote meetings for all of our public meetings, or whether or not we want to move into a hybrid situation, or just opening up our meetings to the public with full attendance by the council. At this point, given the trend that we're seeing in the state and directives from the governor's office, I guess I would recommend that we stay in a status quo situation for, for at least the next few weeks.
Sounds good.
Okay. Planning commissioner vacancy. As we know, Bryce has been elected to the city council and will be taking his seat in early January. At such time, his current spot on the planning commission will become vacant by default. We will need to fill that position. There's really a, two timelines that the council could reasonably consider. One is to basically post the position now with the intent of filling, making an appointment shortly after the first of the year to fill the vacancy as soon as possible. The alternative is to post for the position along with the other two positions that are going to be up based on their normal term rotation, and that would be council member Smith and Melissa. So, there are pros and cons to each. Obviously, if you go with the latter of the two options, you're leaving a vacancy for a longer period of time. We don't anticipate that there's any major items coming through that the four commissioners would not be able to handle. We're not aware of any commissioners that are planning to not make any meetings that would create that difficulty. However, if, however, if you go off for three positions essentially at the same time, if our other commissioners are not seeking reappointment, you're looking at filling a lot of positions at one time. To be perfectly blunt, we have at times only had two or maybe three applicants in total for the position, and frankly speaking, I would not, you don't want to just fill the position because that's a person applied necessarily all the time. I, so I think that there, there is a risk with regards to any applicant pool that's available at any point in time. That being said, the timing is relatively close, and going through two processes takes time and it takes resources. I don't know that there is a right answer to that question, but those are the two options that are available. As far as the method of appointment, we have traditionally utilized just a posting method where we have put it out, advertised it through our usual means of communicating to the community, accepted applications, and then had an interview panel consisting of a senior member of the community development department, the chair of the commission, and a member of the council, and they have made recommendations to the city council. However, it is a political, at the end of the day, it's a political appointment, and you could do limited solicitation, which is identifying a shortlist of people to ask, or just tapping somebody on the shoulder and appointing them. We would recommend the first option. We've utilized it for many, many, many years, and it has been successful in producing solid commissioners for appointment. So, at this point, we're just looking for direction from the council on how you would like to proceed.
What's the timing difference?
The commissions.
When would we be?
About, about a three-month difference. So, Bryce would be leaving his seat in early January. The other positions expire in late March.
So, I would advocate for separate postings. We post Bryce's position right away, and then we, you know, depending, and we always had the flexibility, depending on the applicant pool, if we have multiple people that we really like, when other positions come, come up, we can kind of have that decision or have that discussion then. I don't know. I don't think we're, I'd rather have, have the, someone have the opportunity to fill the position sooner rather than later. It's just my take.
I agree with Joe. I think we post it and try to fill it right away.
I would agree. And I, I mean, I would suspect that those that are going to be up for a new term are going to reapply. Fingers crossed. And then, so, that could be, I guess, an easier process, the second round. But filling a vacancy for Bryce, I think, is important to do sooner rather than later.
Don, do you have any additional thoughts?
No, I'm not going to be here, so you guys do what you need. I, I would rather.
You are an elected member of the city council. We want your.
I know, but I'm not going to be the one doing the work. You guys, I would rather, I would rather see it posted so that you guys get the position filled sooner than later, for the sake of the community.
Tom, do you feel you have direction?
I feel I have direction. The next item, it would not be my intent to provide an exhaustive statement. Quite honestly, there's not a lot of new items that is, thankfully, for sure.
Renee, can you mute?
Can I go ahead and jump?
There we go.
Go ahead.
So, basically, do you have any questions?
I did not. Does anybody else?
No.
No one does?
No.
The, the next item, Mr. Mayor, was the continued discussion related to the projected budgets. Would you like me to go into that now, or would the council like us to slide that till the other reports are done?
I think we just tackle it now.
Okay, if you can give me a minute, I'm going to go back to where that was in the work session presentation. So, council recall that we talked about potential, potential staffing needs. We talked quite a bit We talked quite a bit about the planner one position. The other position that we think is most likely to work for there to be a potential need within the projected budget period would be for Public Works Maintenance Worker one. This would essentially be your basic Public Works Maintenance Worker, similar to Jason Thompson, Jason Schomburg, Derek Kavanaugh within the department. The driver, the car, oh, hang on, I gotta get down to the drivers. The drivers for that position are going to be the level of development activity. Now, that's different than the type of demand it puts on community development staff. What, what does that put on the department? Well, when you have a development that's out there occurring, building permits that are occurring, development and activity, there's a lot of demand in the department to go and do locates, coordinate with contractors both while they're preparing plans, doing the actual development and actually under construction at various levels of the department everywhere, from your maintenance level worker one, all the way up to the department director. City infrastructure projects, as you know and are aware, that with projects such as the Roundabout Project, our Mill and Overlay pavement management projects, and some of the other notable infrastructure projects that we're talking about, and the Potential Capital Improvement Plan, that places demand on the department, both in the field with regards to coordination, locates, dealing with our infrastructure as it may be impacted by those projects, whether we're doing it or somebody else is doing it. And also an administrative demand within the department. Those projects demand a significant amount of time from Cory. Additional infrastructure. So as we are adding infrastructure, Cory's talked about this, for example, would be snow plowing. For every so many miles of street, you are adding an additional plow route within the community for any given event. Your choices are to either lengthen the amount of plow time that you have, and there are limits to how long you can keep the guy, the guys and gals in the plows. Or you're looking at adding an additional position. We know after years and years of experience, you just can't hire seasonal plow drivers. It, it, one, just the labor market, the availability of qualified personnel, and finding personnel who want to work seasonally like that, it's just not there. Administrative demands, I talked about this in one of the previous bullet points, but the amount of things that are continuing to be added to Cory's plate, both just naturally with the development, other activities that are occurring in the city, the evolution of his position, but also, for example, as Mark is transitioning out of his position, some of Mark's stuff, for example, is going onto Cory's plate. And so just as we talked about with the Chief of Police, with the Public Works Director position, over time incrementally, there's just additional administrative demands that are occurring over time. That means that Cory has less time to be in the field. And as he has less time in the field, there's a need to back, there will be ultimately a need to backfill that field resource to be able to get stuff done in the field. From a timing standpoint, it depends on the factors listed above. Cory will be the first one to tell you, status quo, as we sit today, current staffing levels, we're good. But these items listed above will drive whether or not there's going to be a need for another position. Now, is it a hard and fast metric? No, it isn't. What ultimately happened is that your service levels will, in various areas, start to decline over time, because you don't have the resource to get it all done as time, as quickly or in a timely fashion. And so there will, as part of that discussion at that point in time will be what's an acceptable service level? And does the desire for a particular service level drive the need for the additional staff person? In all of this, the largest element is probably development activity. It's the activity associated with development itself, and it's the additional infrastructure. Any questions on that? The other one's a police officer, and I won't spend a ton of time on it because Brady obviously gives his annual staffing study, and this is all very summarized version of that. But the drivers obviously are going to be call volume. So what drives call volume? New residential development will drive call volume. Not only those additional households and the calls they might generate, but also during the development process, every chief I have worked with will tell you that when you have homes that are being built, you have theft, vandalism, et cetera, that goes along with that development activity. New commercial industrial development as well, same things. And then Brady talked about that in his presentation earlier this year, that the annexation of additional roadway and the residential and commercial developments that might occur along the County Road Two corridor and out at the I-35 interchange will incrementally increase the amount of call volume. One example that the chief had given is that currently we go out to the intersections at the interchange frequently, but we're there purely in a supporting role because that's the county's roadway out there. As we start to annex around the interchange, that becomes our roadway, and now we're just not out there for an hour directing traffic. We're out there as the primary scene. Now we have to deal with all the reports and all the burden associated with being the primary agency on those types of events. That's just one example. Commercial. Large industrial development tends not to be a huge call driver relative, relative to its size and impact from a tax base standpoint. But Super America is a big call driver, for example. I mean, you have drive-offs, bad checks, theft, those types of items. You know, a target or something like that. So retail, for all the benefits it provides, it can also be a call driver as well. The other item, obviously, is coverage. So with the addition of the officer we're talking about in the 2021 budget, and as the chief has indicated, we moved to a twenty-four-seven scheduled coverage, but we simply don't have the capacity to fill all our holes related to training, sick, vacation, et cetera. And so additional staffing will be need to get us to what we would consider to be a truly twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five with at least one officer. From a timing standpoint, it's dependent on the factors listed above. Brady, same thing. If for, to maintain the current service level that we are providing and anticipating in the 2021 budget, we're good, as long as everything is status quo. We're there. You know, from the presentations and the workload study, that we usually start looking at an officer when our workload study starts indicating that we're down two or more, two or more officers. Our most recent workload study said we were down two and a half officers. We added one. We feel we're back within that margin of error, so to speak. But as you have call volume go up, or you have desires for increasing that coverage, those are going to be the things that are going to drive that additional officer. So it's a to be determined. Any questions on that? So council direction. We already had our discussion related to the projected budget. The staff are related to the overall budget. So at this point, we're really looking for direction regarding what assumptions should we use in the projected budget related to staffing? And any direction you give now, the council isn't being held hard and fast to this, but it does give some indication of where the council's at and allow staff to plan with regards to service levels, et cetera, and knows when we should be coming back to council, they've done the direction you give us.
Okay. And we're talking, we're not really talking about the 2021 budget. We're talking about 2022 and future budget.
Correct.
Okay, council, any thoughts? Priorities.
I think we definitely need to be getting ourselves ready for the planner position in 2022. If not sooner, what if next summer we lose somebody, then we're in a huge hurt. But I think we need to start putting feelers out there, start thinking about it. My thought, as far as the police officer goes, if we can hold off till 2023, maybe look at the worker for Cory in 2022. Just to kind of see, I, I guess I'd like to see what numbers would look like, again, just because I don't have those sitting in front of me right now again, but I would like to see 2022 if we were to add the planner and the worker for Cory, what that would do to the budget, and then 2023, what the police officer would do to the budget.
And I would agree with that. I think that that's the appropriate order. You know, if you think about like, maybe our development, and then we need to manage these developments, roads. And now we need to lease these new housing developments and people that have moved to our town.
So from a priority standpoint, if you're looking at, you have finite financial bandwidth, and you had to make decisions of priority on how you're allocating that bandwidth, that, that's kind of the rationale you're using to make that decision. So all things be equal, and you have to make a choice between the positions, community development, before public works, before law enforcement, generally speaking.
I think as, as it's been proposed to us and yeah, and the current question, yeah. I don't know if that's a litmus test for all things, but I think in the context of the discussion.
Correct. And there's always going to be the, the specific circumstances at that particular moment in time, but that type of broad guidance does help, does help staff with regards to when we're doing planning, and knowing when we need to bring something back to council for potential action or further discussion. Is there any direction from council on assumptions we should use for the projected budget as to when we should insert the positions? Or not within those projected budgets?
I feel like we're a little premature in being able to give good direction. I heard a couple times, we're really wanting to work with some numbers. Did I hear that correctly?
You know, what I would do is if, if we're just projecting the budget for 2022, let's put in the full year for the planner, half a year for the city worker, and then 2023 do a full year, and just tell us what that looks like.
Okay.
That's my idea. You guys tell me what you think.
That's a good idea. Just what it looks like, because you don't have to make any decisions right now.
Gives us a good starting point to then, you know,
Right.
and have a better.
Yeah.
And I, and as well said, we just really, really, it's good to have a good starting point and start really.
Okay. Brady, Cory, I kind of spoke on your behalf for your departments based on our discussions at management team on these items. Do you guys have anything to add or any questions from council that would help?
I guess I would just say that if there isn't development, we're, literally, we're fine. But I think we all hope there's going to be development going on. So that's why we're kind of projecting that we're going to need to add somebody. And if we're seeing development, then adding somebody is probably, it kind of goes hand in hand. But if we're not, then we'll be fine with what we have.
Thanks Cory. I stand behind the workload study that we did earlier, and I have no problems whatsoever with what you guys have said so far with projections. We're adding an officer in 2021, so it would make logical sense if we get some good development, that 2023 would be the next time we'd be looking. So, but every year, you'll still get my workload study either way, so.
I would admit it if it wasn't there.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else, Tom?
No, I think that's the direction we need, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Do you, do you want to leave it at this level of direction, or do you want to see, do you want to see the projected budget again? As an informational item at, with these assumptions?
Leave at this lo, leave it at this level for now.
Okay. Then that would be everything for the-
Straight up the part. Public Works.
Just one quick update since our report. Our two plow trucks are getting close to being finished. We didn't plan on having to use our old ones, but we did. So everything looked good. The ones, uh, one of them was getting close, just getting some paint finished. And then the other one was a little bit behind, but we're thinking December sometime that we should see both of them. So that's all I got.
Appreciate it Cory. Not too many questions, so we'll move on to the police, police report.
Evening, everybody. Again, you got my report in there. Big month for us, moving so far this month. Moving into the new police department was a huge feat for us. A big shout out and thank you to Cory and his crew at Public Works. We were able to make a full operational move in one day. Everything that we had at the police department went over to the new PD. And then also a huge shout out to our IT department, did a fantastic job getting all our critical infrastructure over and up. And we were basically never out of commission. We were able to work straight through. We had our squad computers that we could do all our work on. And then by the time the regular computers came online, we were ready to go. So we're still a couple of weeks from being fully moved in as far as getting everything where it needs to go, but it's just been great for us. A great problem to have moving into a new PD. I'd like to also state that Haley and I are crafting, in the process of crafting, a Facebook post for our winter parking that took effect November first. We've done over fifty winter parking violation warnings. We're in our educational phase for, that we do every year to get people back into knowing that they have to get their vehicles off the street after ten PM at night, or excuse me, two AM in the morning, until six AM, excuse me, seven AM. So we're heavily educated our community on that, and then plan to still do that until people start getting multiple warnings, then we'll unfortunately have to cite. But it's typically not the situation that we encounter. We did a couple of birthday parades. Halloween went off without a hitch, very slow. It was good to see everybody out and about, a lot of community contacts, but it went, went really well. And I think everybody needed that holiday to have a little fun out there. And then I just wanted to bring up, it wasn't in my report because the governor's order hadn't come out yet. Our department is going to continue to do like we have with the other executive orders. I just want to express to the council and citizens that may watch this and the citizens that are online that we are not going to be kicking in doors. If there's ten people at a Thanksgiving celebration, that's not our job. We're not going to, we're not going to kill our community respect over this, and people have to kind of do what they feels right. And I want to encourage people that, obviously, other violations of businesses and stuff like that, the State Attorney's General's Office has tip lines for that, for reporting, but our main goal is just try to keep everybody safe. But I know there's a lot of angst, and I actually got an email that I was reading earlier in the meeting that somebody wants to know what we're going to do about it. And that's, that we're going to do. You know, that's not our role in our community is to count how many people you have in your private house and in your home. So I, I kind of wanted to put that out there because I know the council, I know you all well, and you've had conversations with me before in the past, and I just want to be open and transparent and see if you have any questions in regard to the executive order and what that means for us.
Appreciate it Brady. Anyone, anyone have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thanks for proactively letting us know what you're going to be up to.
Yes, thank you.
That's important to me. So I know it's important to you guys as well, but just, I, people are tense, and they got a lot of anxiety going on and thinking that the police department's going to kick in your door when there's four cars and grandma's carving the turkey, you know, can cause some anxiety. But I want you to know that that isn't going to happen on our end.
Grandma's safe on your watch, is what you're saying.
Yeah, your biggest problem with me is me stopping by and eating your turkey. So-
I was just going to say, if anybody stops by for-
Or Josh.
My family, you're getting a plate of food.
And we have had offers from the community as well, so we appreciate that. And every year, there's a family that feeds all the law enforcement in the county on Thanksgiving, and this year- And this year they're doing the to go, so they have to go plates and you'll pull up and they'll be your turkey dinner. So it's greatly appreciated, but thank you, council, especially for everything with the new police department. I know some of you have seen it and it's all greatly appreciated.
Appreciate it, Brady. Okay, I'm assuming we don't have any fire department report.
Uh, no, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Any engineering?
Uh, just a couple of small items.
So item one, the Webster Wetland Restoration Project is now complete. At least as far as the piping and restoration backfill, the water is flowing through the new pipe. And we've got a little access road they're going to be building, I believe tomorrow, but otherwise that's wrapped up. I know there's one question from a neighboring property and I do have a call into that gentleman. So if he calls back, I can try and answer the questions. And then the Rainy Ponds Park project, we're building a hockey rink that is paved. And we are waiting for the dasher boards to come so they can be installed. We'll be having a status update meeting with the contractor. Things are going okay. We've got a couple of minor issues. They've agreed to try and sort out promptly, but I don't have the details of that right now, so.
Appreciate it, Rich. Anyone have questions for Rich? All right, thanks. Oh, community development.
So I do not have a lot to update, but I would like to let the city council know that there's a planning commission meeting this coming Tuesday. The only item on the agenda is we'll be conducting a public hearing regarding an amendment to the zoning ordinance, which would allow accessory dwelling units. So if anybody's interested in listening in on that, the meeting starts at seven o'clock. And then we've wrapped up most of the business grant applications. There's two that are still in process and initially if everybody that applied. Would have received the full grant amount. We we had allocated a hundred and $4,500 towards that program. Not everybody was eligible for the full amount based on criteria, but we. Looks like we'll use about 94,000.
Well, the remainder of the dollars then, based on previous council direction, would be utilized for reimbursement of law enforcement salary and benefits.
Any questions for Renee?
Is the public hearing something we need to notify because it needs to be posted as a meeting if there's, if we have a quorum?
We, if we know that you more than three are going to be attending, we probably would like to post that. Andrea can weigh in more if you're just observing and not participating. But usually we like to post it if we know that you're are going to be more than three or be attending.
I would agree that you should post that if you think they're going to be three to attend. If if you're just watching, is there a way to watch the meeting after the fact so you're not actually attending?
Uh, yes, we can do that. We can do that.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, other reports. Yeah, we just had, so, oh, I'm sorry, did I skip parks? I skipped parks. This Mark's not here, I apologize.
Oh, we we have MC Nagel on, so yes, Mark is, Mark is here.
MC.
Not mute. Mark, you're on mute.
Yes, I am. Thank you. Couple of quick things here that don't really have anything to do with parks. First, the numbers are in for our our October third. Drop off day. I'm trying to think of the name. And we actually, for the second year in a row, we, I can't say we made a profit, but I can say that the revenues except. Exceeded the expenditures by $543, despite the fact that the county grant was down about $600. Suffice it to say, with 85 cars through there, they had a lot of items and things to to give us. So that that's good news for us. As you recall, the first 10 years we did this. We had losses ranging from about 1,200 to almost 5,000 in a couple of those years. So we've managed to get the costs under control and for the last two years, this year in particular, we've. Ended up on the positive side, so wanted to let you know that. Right now in the Parks Commission, Kevin's making the transition real well, and I'll talk about that in a minute. We are now trying to recover all the grants and I've just finished doing a 20-page report for the. Menwattan Sioux for the $18,224 grant. So hopefully we'll see that money before the end of the year. Currently working on the Twins Grant to retain, to. So to speak, provide the final report for the ball field at Rowena Park as well, too. And I should have that report done and in, and that's another $10,000 in our pocket for that particular program. And I think as Corey mentioned, and I know Brady as well, we're wrestling with COVID-19. As you know, one of the things we tackled last night at the Parks Commission meeting was whether or not we wanted to start taking. We usually start taking applications for dates at Wagner Park Shelter on December 1st. The Parks Commission is suggesting that we don't do that this year. We just play it by ear and when we know for sure whether we're going to have those. Be able to have the park shelter open then to start taking reservations for it. As you know, last year, we spent the first three months of the summer giving those reservation and money back. So rather than create administrative problems down the road, if we have additional problems, we're going to push that date December 1st back as well. They did approve the fee schedule last night, no increases recommended for either the park dedication or the Wagner Park Shelter fees as well, too. For the obvious reasons of COVID-19. We've been working with the Elko Express, as many of you know. They the express is concerned with foul balls hitting the historic Elko City Park back there. So we've been working on some different ways that we might protect the park better there as well, too. And so I just wanted to be aware of that because the Parks Commission will be looking at that again on at the December meeting as as well, too. Also. The the winter program events, Kevin, in particular, has been working on programming. That will allow us to go online if we have to, or we can hold the event in the community room. So it's kind of a hybrid thing that we'll be able to do. And so if it looks like it's not going to work, then we'll go online. We're also going to try something a little bit different and just simply, instead of grouping it four weeks in a row. We're going to try doing a couple of different things, maybe even starting in late January. A couple of things in February, March and April and try and space these things out as well, too. So for example. The the Yo-Yo Master Dazzling Dave has a show he can do online or in. In the community room. And he also has access to yo-yos. So one of the things would be is to be able to provide people that are interested in coming with a yo-yo. And that way, if we go online or if we have, or if we're at the community room, we'll be able to, if you will. Have the kids participate rather than just watch somebody do that. Also discovered that we can actually show movies with our movie license, so we may even try to do that a couple of times as well, too. So we're going to try and shake it up a little bit and hopefully we can do it in the community room. If the number is allowed a little bit higher, we probably can, but we get up to 100 people at those things. So this idea of trying to do something online with the, with something kids can do actively. While we're doing it is something we're going to try and test market here as well, too. And probably the final thing on that. There is as well. Is to take a look, we've been taking a look at how. In in terms of the programs that we do, how we can kind of continue them through the summer as well, too. And do something a little bit different as well. I think the watchword here for us, at least in parts of Rex seems to be. We're just going to have to be agile, flexible and be able to move at a moment's notice in a way here with all the rules and regs coming in. With that, take any questions on the minutes or the. Or the update.
Hey, thanks, Mark. Does anybody have any questions? Mark, much appreciated.
No problem. Mr. Mayor.
I think Gene just raised his hand. I think Gene just raised his hand.
Am I allowed to say something?
Gene, we're. Not really, but go ahead.
I know there's many avenues, but I I happened to notice the other day, and this was Wagner Park, and I'm sure it's probably every park. There's a sign at the entrance of the park. And I know one thing, it says no golf and it says open from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM and there's about alcohol. And then there's something that I think that shouldn't be there. It says no motorized vehicles. You have parking spots for motorized vehicles. Everybody parks their car in the park.
I think the idea, I think, I I think the idea there is is you can park in the parking spaces, try not to drive on the lawn.
Well, I understand that. So then you also got a sign that says that scooters crossed out, no scooters, no ATVs. Is that the same thing? You can park in the parking lot, but just don't go on the lawn?
Well, I'd like you to, I I suspect that's just fine. I think the idea is is that there's a path. That connects Wagner Park up to Rowena Pond and beyond there. That's the idea is that you wouldn't use ATVs and.
So to speak. The way I look at it, they don't belong anywhere in the park. And the reason I'm saying it because now you allow golf carts in town, but but in the ordinance, it says no golf carts in the park. But the parking lot of a park is the park.
I'm going to just jump in real quick. Gee, is this, is this something you would want? Want us to follow up with you a little bit more in depth on?
Well, I just like you to look at it. I I don't think it should say no motorized vehicles. I think it's misleading.
Sure.
And you know, just look into it. I just happened to see it and I thought it was strange. And I was testing to see if I can actually actually say something during these meetings. I guess I can.
You like, we like you. We're not going to cut you off, but.
Yeah, we'll try, we'll try and answer you. Thank you. I just tried to inform you. It's a perspective.
Oh, that's good.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, Gene. Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
All right, CCC.
Linda, are you going to take that or you want me to do it? Well, that's it.
There's really not much. We did, we had our meeting on Tuesday night and we just discussed the Halloween party. And we set a date for the Easter egg hunt for for next year.
Can you reveal that date yet or no?
Oh, yeah, it was the Saturday before. It's March, I believe, 27th. I believe it's the Saturday before Easter.
It's early this year.
Yeah, let me look here quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, March 27th.
Yeah, another five inch snowfall for the hunt.
Usually the way it works. All right, any questions for CCC? All right, thank you, guys.
You bet.
Other committees, board reports, scale we just had, so I'll. Yeah, I don't really have much to add in fact. I did want to appreciate or mention that I appreciate so many on our city council joining. Now the Zoom piece makes it a little bit easier, but. Yeah, see friendly faces at scale, so. Tom, do you have anything for service delivery?
Nothing more than previous. We're still working on the Mobile Field Force Joint Powers Agreement. The last meeting included discussion related to elections. We will be coming forward to the council. The county is moving in the direction. That they want the smaller cities to be handling absentee ballots within the community. By the 2024 election. The county used to do it for everybody. The largest cities have taken it on. And just so you know, that means providing staffing dedicated, dedicated in one way or another to it, as well as secure voting locations for 45 days prior to. All day, 45 days prior to each of the elections that year. So it is not an insubstantial commitment, both from a facility and a cost standpoint. I will, to be. My thought on this is that I will work with the county to see if they can continue the arrangement they did this year where they had a more centralized location for the smaller communities, which was the Public Works Facility. Within the county for people to go to. It's how they also handle absentee voting for all the townships. We got, there was generally good feedback related to that from what we understand. But it is a significant, and I can understand why the county is doing it. It's a significant demand on their resources as absentee voting has continued to trend upwards. It's placing an ever greater demand on their resources more than it ever has in the past. So just be aware that in our future budgets, this may be more of a discussion and more of a financial commitment than it has been in the past.
All right. Okay, MBTA.
Next meeting is middle of December. I was not able to make it to the last meeting thanks to a sick kid.
I-35, that's Josh, he's not on. I don't know, Tom, did he have anything you wanted to relay you're aware of?
Um, no, Josh did not provide me anything specifically wanted forwarded to the council.
Okay. We've already had the Chamber of Commerce, let moves us to discussion by council. I have one item at the end, but first, is there anyone else that has something for discussion by council? All right, I just, I'll just make it really brief. You know, the governor's orders weren't particularly fun for anyone to hear. Were. A lot of our businesses are being put in very tough situations. Everybody, to some extent in their home lives, are put in difficult situations and having to make tough choices. And I just want to just extend a big thank you to the city staff, everyone that works for city staff. You know, past eight o'clock on a Thursday night and y'all are still hanging in there, not in a meeting with us. You have families, you have lives, and there's just all this added stress on everyone's back. So just want to say that it doesn't go unnoticed and I appreciate all you guys. That's all I have for discussion by council. But anyone wants to motion to adjourn, they're welcome to do so.
Well said, Joe. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's a motion by a man, second by, I think that was Kate.
Kate.
Don, you want to vote first?
I.
I'll vote I. Kate?
I.
Amanda?
I.
All right, means adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.